session so in case you move on over here. Uh the board would like to report out that during closed session, the trustees approved a settlement agreement with former adjunct Mark McIntyre. Pursuant to which Mark and tells Mark and tile's employment at the college seizes as and he waves all potential claims of any nature against S P C C. And its faculty and staff in exchange for sums to be paid by the college and its insurer totaling one hundred and twenty thousand in the aggregate. The vote was six zero unanimously with trustee Abud absent. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. To the republic for which stands our nation, our God, and this world, and our dignity and justice.
And I did it backwards on the agenda because I reconvened and then I reported out.
Yeah.
So now we are at item four point four.
I I.
Which is public comment.
I'm gonna have one coming up.
You will? Well, welcome everyone. It's been a month. And we have a nice um. Nice set of reports here. So thank you, Dr. Beebe and all the staff for organizing this as our speaker gets his slip ready. These study sessions are um. Great for us to learn and we have some exciting reports. So I want to thank you because we've seen a lot of progress as the years have come and so many different initiatives and so many folks on the ground. And I kind of want to put this on early because I feel like this is uh going to be exciting along with Dr. Johnson who I saw him who has a wonderful presentation for us. And so so thank you for your labor and that because I'm super excited with the work you guys are doing with.
You're very excited.
Okay, so we are at item four point four, public comments, and so members of the public have the opportunity to directly address the board on any item of interest to the public. That is within the jurisdiction of this board, whether or not it is in item notice on this agenda. A member of the public may also speak before during the board's investigation if any item listed for this agenda. So I just want to add that generally no action may be taken on any item not noticed for action on this agenda, but the board may receive input from the public. And so as such, I have Ash J. Johnson, Ash J. Johnson, please come up to the front up there if you want to be on camera. And if you want to speak from elsewhere, it's up to you, but the camera will see you if you stand over.
Is that my board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like in this.
This great?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or elsewhere, but wherever you're comfortable. And you will have. Five minutes and I will give you a um. Two minute warning when your five minutes come close. Yeah?
That's very generous. Hello to you all. Uh my name is Ashay Johnson and I am a dual enrollment student. The emoji is a community trying to improve the lives and futures of black students across America. With a mission statement like this, I would like to request that the Board of Trustees. Ensure that emoji is led by someone well trained to uplift black students. Crystal Farmer failed to do this at the B S U of Antae attended this spring. She led S P C C and high school students in a group discussion encouraging everyone to accept her personal views about the worthlessness of black men. The harmless Cosme as the only blackmail present during this conversation made me lose confidence in myself. And my pro- and the project I had trying to start a black student union in my school. I feel I had lost I lost faith in the new friendships I had created through the black student union. And I still don't feel safe on S P C C's campus taking my classes here. And it's. I hope that the. Board of Trustees can prevent this from happening with other students, black or otherwise, in the future.
Thank you so much for your time and congratulations on being a dual enrollment student. Okay, that. Yes, we normally don't um. We normally don't um take action with the chew. Yeah, oh, sorry, I thought it's yeah, we normally don't um take action um. Or discuss anything that we that's not noticed on the agenda. And then when the presentation um, Ajay, when the presentation comes up, you also have an option to speak at that point. So if you want to slip during the module presentation, you can do a slip for that item on the agenda. Um okay, that brings us to uh item five point one, minutes of the regular meeting, June twenty eighth and July twelfth. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been motioned by trustee Abud and seconded by trustee Miller to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June twenty eighth and July twelfth on this session. Yes.
Just one suggestion, um it's the minutes of oops. Uh June twenty eighth and when we get to the board report, there is a report from Jonathan that mentions that um. The. Um. He reported that the foundation for Santa Barbara uh City College is considering asking the college for financial support. And that specifically related to the promise program and I thought we should add with relation to the promise program if I remember correctly.
I think it was generals.
Yeah, I think it was general, just generals. I mean, it encompassed the promise and if all the programs, but um.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be in like, I think it just.
Two hour disre- discretion or whatever in the part.
Un- unrestricted.
Yeah, because it was not, it was not a restricted.
It was an unrestricted, okay.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay, then I did not understand that at the time. I thought we were speaking about the promise program specifically, but that's fine. I just wanted to be sure we were accurately referring.
Yeah. Yeah, in front of should it, I mean, they've incurred something because of the promise and different things and just knowing that it's a reciprocal relationship. That it just makes sense to, it all flows back, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I think where the promise came in was I said that.
Yeah.
We've gotten more revenue because of the promise that they've done and that's increased enrollment.
Oh, yes.
So and maybe for the other factors too, so the money would be helping them do more to then maybe even increase more.
Okay, so I I just wanted to be sure we were reflecting the conversation, so it's fine.
So the minutes fine as they stand. Okay, good. Um all in favor?
I. I.
opposed? Motion carries. Uh that brings us to. She's already up there. She's ready to go.
Ready to rock and roll.
Okay, well, we're excited. Uh we have presented, Dr. Beebe, did you have any, Dr. Beebe, any thoughts before Dr. Moreno?
I wouldn't dare steal any thunder from Dr. Moreno, so I I'm just going to say um we've got the big portion of the the team here.
Okay.
And we're thrilled to have uh the team here from School of Extended Learning and our first annual report by Melissa Moreno and and very excited to hear about.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. It's point one, you're on. Members of the board, superintendent Dr. Beebe, thank you so much. I want to preface this by first um thanking. Um the administration for the opportunity to serve in this role this past year as interim vice president has been. An incredible journey and learning experience for me and um and we have such an incredible team behind the scenes. That has helped us uh accomplish all of these things and um and our internal partners um. That worked with us and our community. So I just wanted to thank everybody for this opportunity and to be able to share. Um everything that we've done this last year and and give you a sense of the direction that we're headed. Oh, so let's start with over. That's the end. I'll just manually go back to it again. A little tree here. About the tree. There you go, okay, same slide, same. Same, almost the same slide. So I'm going to start by giving you a little mini introduction and a little mini lesson and non credit for those of you that don't understand kind of what we're doing. And a little give you a little historical perspective and then we'll talk about our accomplishments. So. Um as you know, um back in about twenty twelve, we were under the threat of being defunded. For tuition free education and it was at the time we brought into fruition the Center for Lifelong Learning. And that was a very successful endeavor for a few years uh before now and it was bringing in a uh revenue of about two point five million dollars. And we had we had dismantled basically all of our free programming to bring it to be fee based. And we had a little bit of adult ed tuition free that languished and um. And so when Dr. Beebe came on campus, one of his first um. Charges was to get community feedback and I think he his response was overwhelming from the community that we sort of bring back adult ed. And tuition free programming and so um. I'm not sure if I had sucker across my forehead, but um I feel very fortunate to have had this opportunity. And it's been an amazing ride to bring back tuition free programming. So the charge was to maximize our tuition free. Um programming, everything that we could and um keep our fee based program to balance it out and to integrate everything. So um. I guess I'll go here. So that's the last slide, I need to do the first slide, yeah. So um my charge was to integrate the fee based uh program into extended learning and maximize tuition free programs. And so it brings us to today to our first annual report and. We can't really talk about adult education without recognizing Sam Wake. Our Wake campus is named after him and he led our adult ed programs for a long time. And that's um and so. We our first um ESL adult ed class in Santa Barbara was in nineteen eighteen, so that was a hundred years ago. So we're celebrating our centennial um event and so you can kind of see the cycle where we had tuition free, we went to fee base. Now we're back to tuition free and we're celebrating a hundred years of adult education in Santa Barbara. So we're very excited about that.
Want to clap for that?
Um a little mini lesson in uh tuition free or non credit is the same thing. Um we decided when we did our rebranding with School of Extended Learning that we would let the public understand that tuition free is the same as non credit. So we use the words tuition free to represent our non credit programming. Um and it differs from credit in a number of ways. Um I have prepared a companion, very detailed annual report in the form of a flip book that I have provided to you. Where you could go into deeper detail tonight, maybe um over cocktail hour before dinner or something. Because um it it's much more detailed than what we're going to do in twenty minutes today, but basically um. Tuition free programs have are based on hours. They have no credits. Uh but we've set up a system where students still get transcribed for the courses and certificates that they take. And credit uh is units are earned and are at a usually at a transfer to college level. And our um instruction is really um pre collegiate. Um goes as below a- a- as far as eight levels below transfers. So we have literacy students that come through our doors and. Um we are very accessible and we're funded by the state by calculating hours of students sitting in our seats. And so uh that's very different from the credit model, but um and generally credit funding is a little higher. We have equalized apportionment funding for only certain programs that are um college preparation and career. Uh development and our primary goal is to bridge students either to credit or straight into the workforce um to either enhance their careers. Or um help them find jobs. So um this is what we've done in a very short period of time. So we we overshot all of our goals and and um met all of our metrics um in it the first year. Kind of unexpectedly, I think the team came together and was so excited that we just really charged, okay? And so these are some of our short term goals that we set back in June that we met plus. As we moved along the way, we had uh numerous challenges. So we reset a few times and added more goals and met all of these. And again, these are detailed in the uh report. And then these were the long term goals that we're still working on. And again, we we added to this list as we experienced our first year. Uh so let me talk about our organization. So it takes a village and we have a little mini village over here, but this is just the immediate team of extended learning. I have many of them in support here today, but really the team includes the credit faculty. It includes our internal partners. I see our director of admissions and records are here today. Um and and um so it really was a team effort. We worked collaboratively all year long. Um and so early on, we we were charged with such a um a difficult, I would say, transition. To effectively dismantle the Center for Lifelong Learning that had been been built lovingly. And successfully by our executive, former executive director Andy Harper, who is now the senior uh director at uh extended learning. And by uh Ken Harris and Jeanette Chen and they did such a wonderful job and I think their transition was so significant. Because we were um in integrating under a whole new brand and integrating all of programs. So we did some team building. And I think this was one of the most important decisions we made because we ended up uh bonding, getting to know each other. And we, I mean, we are a cohesive team. Um and I think that that really was a smart decision. So we rebranded from uh Center for Lifelong Learning and our non credit, non brand. To integrate into the School of Extended Learning. Um and the significant impacts of rebranding, I think, are worth mentioning. Because I think we became a cohesive and inclusive culture as a result of this. I think all of the players got to understand what everyone was doing. And we um we aligned ourselves with the college mission, which is really important. And so we really feel like we're a part of Santa Barbara City College and all of what we do is um integrated. Um and then we kept the fee based program, not just for the dollars, but also because we wanted it to um serve as an incubator for trying new things. Because the fee based classes have less um reg- are of a less regulatory nature. And it lets us incubate new ideas and it helps us to be a pipeline into uh our School of Extended Learning programs. But we do have a revenue uh stream from fee based learning and we decided the most important place to put that revenue would be. In enhancing our marketing because School of Extended Learning is different than any other credit program. And we really need to build awareness in our community in ways that um the credit programs don't. And so our marketing budget is really important to us and we we are keep keeping uh a kung fu grip on uh the print schedule. Um which credit did away with, but that is really, really important for our community. It's a very expensive piece of our marketing. It's our number one um cost. And so we we lean on the fee based revenue to support the School of Extended Learning marketing budget. We also have the support course of the foundation and our um office of communications marketing. So our really our program strategy was to maximize everything in tuition free. And so these are the areas that we're limited to in um tuition free programming. And so we did, we engaged in a huge migration project, migrating everything over that we could that fell into these categories from our fee based program. To be tuition free and um. But there are certain things that are missing from this list that we think is really important for our community. One notorious omission is fitness. And so we as a team developed our fee based topics that we accomplement our tuition free programming with. And I think this is a really nice mix of programs between uh tuition free and fee based. And so we have this beautiful uh program that meets almost every community uh need that's out there. And um so we think that's important. Fall twenty eighteen represents the most robust programming that we will have with uh since twenty twelve with six hundred sixty one tuition free classes. So we have migrated everything over. Fall represents ceramics, jewelry, glass arts, everything that, you know, was um missing. So um and this is kind of a um a visual of what our programs look like before extended learning. And now this is what it looks like after extended learning. So we've really kind of flipped it to tuition free and our enrollments reflect this kind of shift. So orange is the fee base. It's an intentional reduction in enrollments and the blue is uh an intentional influx. And you can tell by fall, we expect to have duplicated headcount, about fifteen thousand total students coming through our doors. So this shows us that there was a community need out there to bring tuition free programs um into our community again. Because we were not serving these students before. So these are a list of all of our programs and I've highlighted a couple of of new ones that we brought into School of Extended Learning. So our um strategy for this year is to continue to build uh in these programs. Um so we also have events and I just want to quickly touch on this. We as a team have been really brainstorming about what is the value of our brand in the community? And how do we have events represent that um uh brand value to the community? And so one example is we, you know, I don't know if you know, but we had a student that was deported during uh the semester. And uh I got an email from a very upset instructor and students were in ESL class were also very upset. And this was a rapid deportation through an ICE raid at Aglita bus stop. And so all of the students rallied and um and we, with the help of Jose Martinez and our community education center. We did just the other day an immigrants rights forum and we organized a humanitarian effort where we had a caravana. Which is a caravan of cars that drove from Santa Barbara down to San Diego and forty miles east and did a water drop. We had four hundred gallons of water, something like crazy like that. And um and this is Enrique Moronas, the CEO of Border Angels, who was our um esteemed guest and he was like a rock star to me, so I took a picture. And then don't forget our centennial celebration was nine nine in the afternoon when we want you to come. So um I've been really thinking about what is our measure of success? And I I chose these as our three sort of key performance metrics or. Key performance indicators. One is F T E S, one is community satisfaction and one is fiscal sustainability. So I want to share with you a few slides. So these are the green are the targets we set for F T E S back in September. When um Dr. Gerald and I were working on this and um you know, this is where we started. And we overshot uh seventeen eighteen and our plan is to overshot our projections in eighteen nineteen. And um we're on track to to do so with our robust program in the fall. And I, you know, we we were we're expected to plateau at about fifteen hundred in a couple more years. And then um the other piece of our um uh measure of success is that based on our F T S performance. Our F T S is our neat little metric that measures the number of hours students sit in the classroom. To figure out how many equivalent full time students we have and then we send that number to the state of California and they give us money based on that number. But in addition, as we increase our F T S, some of you uh board members might recall, we have been experiencing campus center sales decline. Which is extra funding, it's sort of gravy. As long as they continue to give it to us, it's really nice, but it's supposed to help with the overhead of the shot campus and the wake campus. And so we've been a little bit stagnant, but with our performance in eighteen nineteen, it should show pretty significant increase of about six hundred thousand dollars. So this is my projected budget and I just I want to show this to you because I feel like we're not off the mark with our budget. And the weird thing is, we don't get the the money from apportionment until the following year. But this is how I look at, I mean, we're almost a break even organization. We only counted the increase in the center status funding. Um that's our projected revenue for our F T S performance at the top. So we're about a five hundred dollar organization and then this is the budgets we set for all of our um programs. And I have under penalty of near death. You cannot exceed these budgets and they have that message up in the lobby there. And then our number one challenge, I think, of this past year is registration. So I put Michael's face up there just to say thank you. The 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 this really is, it continues to be a challenge and we're doing everything we possibly can to make this streamlined for students. But I have to say. This is the comment we got when we did our first opening day of registration for the most robust schedule ever. And I'd never seen enjoyable, stress free in the same sense as the registration process. And I got this from one of our uh students and so we really did move the needle on this and I think we were very successful. And this is my last slide. I want to spend just a couple minutes on it. So you all have an ambassador program. You know, I'm an ambassador. So we 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 engage the community um in this way to create ambassadors. We started with eight, we now have nineteen and we meet every other month and we talk about what's going on with our community at extended learning. We have students, we have faculty, you name it, and they are well versed in the messages that we intend to get into the community. And they're our eyes and ears and give us feedback. Um we conducted a number of community information meetings as we did this transition. We stopped those, but everybody knows I have an open door. For any complaints. Um we're engaged in continuous improvement. Um we started the coffee and conversation with the V P so that I can connect with our non credit faculty and our fee based faculty and answer questions. And then uh the non credit curriculum guide, this was a huge effort. This was um in response to a number of very serious concerns that the credit faculty brought forth about what the heck we were doing. And so we sat down, we listened to all their concerns. We um created a non credit curriculum guide that establishes a non competitive collaborative relationship with the with the credit side. Which is a hundred years in the making. And we took that to academic senate. We got approval of that curriculum guide. It's a fluid document. We'll be revisiting it each year. And so we we just did a lot to um connect with our community. And that includes students, community members, faculty, internal and external partners. So to conclude, I just want to express my extreme joy and pride in the team that um we adopted to do this um effort. And I think we're just on a a terrific trajectory to continue to grow this program and be successful in the community. So thank you.
Goals for the board of people's right, our goal is to keep that going.
Yes, there we go. We're good. We're done. We're good. What a phenomenal team that we have working on this though and you just can't brag about them enough. When I go into the community, this is one of the first topics that comes up. I mean, I know it's the same for for you all. Just fantastic progress in one year. I mean, just absolutely amazing.
We're all still standing.
Yeah, all still standing.
And smiling. You look lovely.
Yeah, no, I want to say thank you. I mean, it's really great for me to be able to tell people, we have hundreds of tuition free classes at S P C C. It's a great thing to promote that we do. Um and so I had two questions. The first one is, can you tell us more about how you outreach to the community to develop what preferences are for new classes?
Yes, well, we have engaged a consultant. We're paying for that with a couple of different uh categorical grant dollars. Um to do an environmental scan. So we've directed this researcher in partnership with two grant uh leaders. To um look at what we have, how we're doing, to survey the community. Um and um and to survey our students and then come back with a a gap analysis and what is not there. And so we already have developed a list of programs that we want to um move forward with. One of them, for example, I mean, we are the number one per capita of nonprofit organizations in the community. So one idea is to have a nonprofit certificate program to train um employees of nonprofits. And how to, you know, fundraise and deal with boards. We had, we're bringing uh in a a companion certificate to our um E M T, our emergency medical technician program. To do their recertification and I mean, we have a number. To do their recertification and I mean, we have a number of ideas that we're working on. Um and but we wanna wait for this data to to justify. And so and and we have, I I think I presented on the Adult Education Block Grant. A lot of that is community outward and all the partners that we have on that grant, it's several million over time. And um so we have a lot of uh feedback from our partners on that as well, yeah.
That's great, that's good, yeah, I think people would appreciate giving the feedback and then one day seeing the class that they suggested up to take. And they go take it.
Well, we already have one, um it's called, it's in the offered in the fall, it's called I Fallen and I Can Get Up. And that was a result of community feedback because we have a lot of seniors and so it works on, you know, standing up from a falling down position. But you know, it's wonderful.
And my other question is kind of related to something I talked about at like two two board meetings ago. I think I wasn't clear in what I was explaining, um and I was able to talk to Anthony and he cleared up to me like what I maybe had said wrong. But I think I had said something about like more civic in uh education to the extended learning that. But I, so I know we do at civic education for people who wanna become citizens. But what I was more imagining is would it be possible to do things like teaching people about how government works separately from citizenship? Because a lot of us don't get that education in school, like I wanna know how mu- I mean, I know, but like I wanna know how Santa Barbara City works. For example, like if I'm a resident, how does the city make decisions, how does the city impact my life here? I was wondering if classes like that would be possible.
Anything is possible.
Good answer.
And and um we've committed to create programs that are based on data and community feedback and need. So if that comes forward, I mean, I could see that um I could see that being partnered with a credit program. And um policy or government or something like that, so it's something you certainly can explore. Yeah, and consider yourself a community member that's giving you that feedback right now.
Thank you.
Um, couple of questions and great job. Um, one question is, uh where, you mentioned plateauing at fifteen hundred FTS. I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, we used to be at about twenty-five hundred, so I'm wondering if we aim for higher?
So um this is a collaboration with our EVP of Educational Programs. And so we are, I consider School of Extended Learning a a a piece of the larger picture of where we need to be as a college. And so that fifteen hundred was part of that whole picture and we could certainly change that. I mean, there's a lot of of things kind of changing, coming down from the state, assembly bills and things like that. And we might rebalance, but that really rests in the hands of our Executive Vice President of Educational Programs and that overall arching strategy. Of which I can be a voice, but um.
What I'm thinking of is community demand, basically.
Yeah.
I mean, that that it's probable, given where we were, that the demand for that is present.
It could be and in in the formal report, you know, one of our goals is to meet community demand.
And then the other question um is a little more specific, which has to do with um where are we on bringing back the music classes? Um this is because I've got community questions about it, I know we have uh the concert band, the symphony, the choral. All of those which used to be state-supported and have a very large community participation that was converted to volunteer. Basically, those are FTES that um are left on the table until we get them back into.
We're put, we're we're taking them off the table because they're in the curriculum queue, we've already approved, they've been launched. They're gonna be going to the state um for approval and so I don't know the timing of that. But we we're doing that with music and the theater arts.
Good.
And so, and it's particularly timely because now the volunteer program is gonna require that you get fingerprinted and all this stuff. So this is a way to make those people students and so.
And it's a, it's a large community participation.
Yeah, so that's gonna, I'm hoping that that's part of my fifteen hundred number, so we'll see, yeah.
There were also some smaller groups, uh jazz, for example, where I have heard folks in the community say, well, it went um private. When CLO was developed and really we would like to come back in the umbrella with SBCC. Because you have the uh the presence, the web presence, people find out about the class much more easily. And you don't sort of wither away because the group, um people have to leave the group, they'd like to come back.
We have, we have four music classes in the queue, I can't remember what they are, but I'll take and and look at that, thank you.
Well, thank you for how intentional you guys are at the quality in which you're providing this.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to item six point two, Emoja Community History and Mission and Goals Report, Dr. Chris Johnson.
Yeah, well, Chris is making his way up there, um Chris and I were uh reminiscing a bit about when we first started talking about Emoja. And I think that it was either the first week that that I was here and Chris and I met each other. We started talking about the Emoja Program and I was just asking whether or not we had one and and so on and so forth. And kind of the basic tenants behind the Emoja Program and why there's there's it's such an important program. Um for not just uh black students, but for the for the college as a whole. And um so with that, I mean, that was two years ago, over two years ago. Um we're at a point now where Chris has really um educated himself on what the Emoja Program is all about. Uh and has taken a great leadership uh position in moving us to the next step with all of this. And and I'm just absolutely thrilled at the opportunity and and what the college is doing relative to support of of the Emoja Program and and where we are with it. Um the Emoja Program itself, and I won't steal, you know, your thunder. The Emoja Program started in California um in two thousand and six and really has taken a taken a uh taken off across the state. And uh there's different uh levels of commitment uh by the different institutions that have adopted the Emoja Program. Um but we're looking at at a at a commitment here at this college that is really quite significant and I and I'll just stop there. I could go on, I I feel a speech coming on, but I'm not. So I'll just turn it over to Dr. Johnson, let him uh talk about this.
Thank you, um President Garaldo, President Superintendent BB, members of the board, invited guests, especially, you know, a state guest. Obviously faculty and staff members, but Dr. Aaron Jones came, came up to support, I really appreciate that. Want to support members of Serge, my heart, my heart, um yeah, that part, okay, so. Quick introduction and you'll see my our presentation, I'll say, well, welcome and introduction, well, welcome and introduction right here. I'm uh Dr. Christopher Johnson, Service Associate Dean here, uh got here maybe a few months before uh Dr. BB did, uh started February sixteen. Uh got got to the campus, one of the first things that came up was uh uh Marsha Wright, she was uh EOPS Director. She says, you know what, there's not enough things going on here for black students, we need to start our Emoja Program, well, what's that? You know, is 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 kind of my question. Um she, you know, we began to do some history, we worked on uh going to summer learning institutes. Uh Dr. BB, as he mentioned already, supported big time saying, hey, we need to get an Emoja Program here. So we got trained on it, we basically just needed to get some work done and um started a work group. So we got about ten or twelve people who are interested in the success, academic success especially, but also belongingness and community success of black students here on the campus. And I said, hey, I'm I'm all for that, um handed out for the board, you guys got the mission statement, but you also have a little bit of the history. And you have a little bit of what the the program is um in there, read that at your leisure, that's, you know, that's not for now, there's a a lot in there. We just want to pull out and have you go into a little bit later. Welcome and introduction, again, right, um we're gonna go through a data walk, you know, uh look, we're gonna look at the data here uh at the campus. Why do we need something like this, right, I mean, we'll have a little discussion about that. The mission statement, I handed it out to the board, but I'm gonna show everybody in the room what the mission statement is. The program design, what we, how we plan on implementing, there's a lot of different models, we could do a learning community model, we could do a cohort model. We're gonna go over what we plan on doing here at Santa Barbara City College. The research model, what RP said, hey, what are some factors that lead to success, what's the framework? So we'll go over a little bit of that, accomplishments, the dates, what have we been doing over these past two years, have we just been sitting on our hands and we just, what have we done? We've been doing some things, we wanna go over that. Fall, this is our launch, you know, we got, just got back from summer learning institute, some students just got back from Student Leadership Institute and they said, you know, you know. What is it that we wanna accomplish here this year, and then we're gonna talk about moving forward, how we're gonna accomplish all these things. Just so you know, I'm not going there for twenty minutes, I'm gonna go about ten, I got my timer going too. So um uh why should we do Emoja here at SBCC? If this isn't a stunning graph for you, I I I hope that um you get a chance to grasp this. Our student success for our general population, right around seventy-four percent, see or better is what I'm considering, you know, academic success. Our black students, around fifty-five percent, nearly twenty percent below our general population. We've got some graphs and some other ones, it's kind of faded out in the background, but long story short is, uh black students need some extra uh support. Um they they need, you know, we have the largest equity gap for for our black students here. Um like I said, nearly a twenty percent margin, we need to do better, um something I I I say and I've heard, you know, our past president say is. That rising tide raises our ships, if we do the best and provide the resources for the students who are suffering the most. Or not receiving, you know, the things that they need to be do well here, everybody's gonna do better. Um, okay, so this is a long, kind of drawn out uh uh mission statement, right? I wanna point out a few things, Emoja means unity, so we're talking about pulling people away rather than pushing them out, so let's begin with that. Dedicated to enhancing the cultural and educational experiences of black students and other students. So again, even though we have that focus on black African-American students, we're looking at raising, you know, that 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 tide for everybody. Um actively serves to promote student success for all students. Um as well as, you know, we we were through a lens, right, this through a lens, it's a framework. Through curriculum and pedagogy responsive to the legacy of African and African-American that that's was. So that's that emotion, you know, again, the board, you get a chance to look at this later, uh I want to just leave it up just for a second, just so people could read through. I know I'm moving a little bit faster, so. If you have questions, I could I could bring it up a little later. Uh so we are gonna do a learning community model here, this model, you know, links to more courses in our presentation. Um links to more courses, um we're gonna provide some guidance, some counseling for our students. We consider that be to be very hands-on, very high-touch, very kind of in-your-face, we wanna know if you made the class that day. Wanna know why you, why, you know, what's going on, if this is what we find to be very successful and I'll go over a little bit of that with the framework. We're gonna provide faculty mentors, that's been a a great outreach from going, you know, working with our faculties, providing some faculty mentors to get in their their face and work with some, do some things. Tutoring, tutors are gonna be very accessible to them, have a dedicated space, on the other side of this wall is a uh C Campus Center CC two twenty-six. And that's gonna be a dedicated space, we're gonna have that furnished, we're gonna get some AV in there, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, make this a space where students actually want to hang out. Uh a dedicated coordinator, that's the plan, you know, we wanna move, you know, from, you know, part-time to a full-time and just have people who are one hundred percent, this is their role. This is their their task to to, you know, be that resource, be that person for uh black students on this campus. This fall, we're gonna start with the express to success, um uh English course, Professor Bonnie Bryant, very highly recommended. Uh as a person who uh provides that that literature, African-American poetry, literature, culture inside a classroom, we're gonna do that. Uh this fall, that class is uh filling up as we as we speak. And in spring, the plan is, and it's not, you know, written in stone, is to have a a spring express to success math course, so that's gonna be our our link courses for now. So I mentioned a little bit about the framework that we have uh moving moving forward. Emoja, you know, basically the RP group, you know, basically said, there are certain successes, certain uh factors that lead to um success, is a success network. Long story short, right, and um what a what a college student needs to succeed, these are, you know, the the basic things that they were looking at, they need to succeed, they need some mentoring. And, you know, kind of hands-on, some some people who are from staff members, from faculty, from people in this space, Carrie Hudson is one of those people that just mentor folks. Uh some peer mentoring, we're gonna look at going towards that that route and say, if you know that path, teach me that path, show me that path, so who's somebody I can reach out to. Tutoring, we mentioned a little bit of that, supplemental instructions, please, that's gonna, you know, really not only just inside the classroom. But some 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 classes that are gonna actually support the the support the learning, service learning is also part of that, it's framework as well. And leadership development, so if you look at the circle there, you see it's directed, it's focused, nurtured, engaged, connected, and valued. And all this is gonna be done through an Afrocentric lens, so we're gonna really look at the needs of our, the needs of our black students in here as well. So what have we done so so far, we've done a bunch, we did, we did a lot of things, so so far we're doing, uh we're rolling around, we have our uh Emoja Student Workers. Myself, other people, just signing folks up, just saying, hey, become part of the database, you know, figure out what's going on, what's helping here. We also went to two summer learning institutes, my first, not my first year, my second year, two thousand seventeen, I went down with uh three other faculty members. This past summer, we brought six folks, some folks are uh with us today, went down to uh the Summer Learning Institute. We also did a winter retreat and I was just, you know, myself down in San Diego, that was a lot of fun and we learned a whole bunch as well. Uh Eight to Men, that's a program that's dedicated towards uh African-American men uh within the community colleges and there are a a lot of the colleges as well. And that was done at LAX, we did that seventeen and eighteen statewide, Emoja Conference, that's for all of our students. And we took a bunch of students, at least a band load, up up to Sacramento to learn, learn a whole bunch of stuff about what's being done. We heard some really good speakers there too, so Tim White spoke and Cornel West spoke at that one as well. Um Emoja Day, uh that was done at Riverside in two thousand seventeen. We did an HBCU visit, you know, so the students had a got had a chance to go to Howard for their hundred fiftieth homecoming. And that was an amazing experience for those those folks. Uh we also did, just just came back, the students uh right there went to UCR for our uh uh student, uh well, as as a regional one. Within the Student Summer Learning Institute, just got back from that, I think either Saturday or Sunday. Uh High School Talking in Class Event, we had a bunch of students come to the come to the campus right here, March nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, it was dumping rain. And we had to get, get a chance to hear from them right here in our own um GDR, our our um our, what does GDR stand? Grand Gourmet Dining Room, right here, so I know it stands for something. Uh we have to, uh we redesigned our multicultural speaker series, like like an honor to run test, to have our Emoja students be integrated and become a part of that. And also have clubs and organizations like Black Student Union and our Black Student Students who meet right here and just talk about what kind of needs that they have as well. Year one, what are we trying to do for year one? So year one, what we really hope to do uh is, again, have the space available, have it staffed so the students can go in there, walk around and make themselves comfortable. Study, have some, you know, some some computer uh that's in there, but more of a community space where they just feel like there's a space for them on campus. It's so essential and it's actually one of the vital parts of any strong Emoja program. Uh dedicated seats in the express to success program, again, having a section that says, hey, this this is this is for you. You have a place where you can kind of follow, a little bit of a cohort model, where you could follow around, see students who who are studying what you're studying and understand what you're what you're understanding. Dedicated coordinator, another key element to a successful Emoja program is having somebody who's hands-on, who's in-your-face and kind of, you know, you know, who is is high-touch as well. Ongoing orientations, I mentioned earlier that we want to have orientations, not just at the beginning of the year or not just at the beginning of the semester. But we continually bringing students on and having people sign up and orienting them to to uh what we're doing. Emoja uh faculty mentors, uh there's a a bunch, maybe about eight to ten folks who are just out there, you know, hands-on, reaching out to students saying, hey, you know, we want. I I would love to mentor you, hey, I noticed that, you know, you're you're somebody who uh I I feel like I can invest in them, dedicated to your success. Wanna do a black graduation, right, so passes, it's it's very successful at at many other colleges, I was first introduced this to uh at UCSB. And I saw Dr. Aaron Jones, you know, getting his Kente cloth on and, you know, walk walk through this past uh summer, uh this past spring as well. And then meetings with counselors as well, so very, very key that we have academic counselors and personal counselors that are that are hands-on in what they're doing. Uh goals moving forward, what do we wanna do after this year, what do we wanna do as after we launch and what we take all our bruises and maybe have some successes, maybe not have some successes, things like that. We wanna really incorporate some peer tutoring, so students who've actually gone through the program, get a chance to mentor and tutor and and do some, have some instructions for for students moving on. We'd love to incorporate a book loan program where we have books and students aren't, you know, might be, have some financial crises, could say, hey, we wanna loan some books out. They do this up at EOPS uh very successfully. Mental health counseling, we understand that our 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 black students uh connect with certain people in in different ways. So we love to have mental health counseling, you know, that a lot of different groups have struggles with black students, they definitely have struggles when it comes to mental health as well. Book grants, you know, we've seen this very successful with the Promise Program, we'd love to be able to supply books. We'd love to be able to supply uh school supplies and backpacks and all those things that students need to just kind of kick off and help that move, you know, help close that gap. That that twenty percent gap, anything that helps them about how more successful here. Back to school welcome week, we're we're gonna do a little bit of that this year, we're gonna open up, we're gonna do a big launch over in the dedicated space at the end of September, so it won't be the 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 open. But just kind of a a a a open door ribbon cutting, you know, you're welcome, we would love to do that in the upcoming years where we just have a week, a welcome, a weekend wel- welcome week to get people. We would love to do that in the upcoming years, where we just have a week, a welcome, a weekend wel- welcome week to get people, uh, acclimated to the campus. Want to research and track our success rates, so that's, you know, institutional research and figure out, hey, what are we doing that works? What does not work? Continue our HBCU visits, uh, that's, that's really big, you know, a, a lot of, uh, the HBCUs, not all of them, have made a promise that if you're an emoji student, you're able to, to accomplish your AA, we're gonna, we're gonna welcome you in, we'll open our doors, we want to begin to do some business and have people come in, as well as a personal development course, so the PD courses are one of those things that really walk people through the things that they need, how to, you know, log onto your pipeline, how to, you know, what, what, some library literacy, things like that will be very successful for, for our, for our folks. So that's my presentation, I appreciate, um, you guys coming and listening, you know.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So before, um, we open up to questions for the session for the board, we do have, uh, public comment.
Yeah. Um, I just had a few questions about the emoji, it's about emoji. Uh, I wanted to ask what training will be implemented so emoji will be equipped to help black men as the most underserved and targeted group in our society, particularly in educational settings?
Great question, you know, I think, a black man, okay, so we mentioned black students as general, having the, the lowest rates, but black men even suffer even more. So what we, what we realized, this is from our equity reports, and it's probably true at most of our co- uh, community colleges, and there's just not enough resources. So one is, you know, making sure that we have that as a, as a key focus. Going to the Summer Learning Institutes to understand, you know, what type of, you know, extra resources are needed. Our plan is to, and this wasn't mentioned up there, is to begin a, a black men's group, like an A to Men. We begin to have different campuses, you know, college, uh, college campuses that actually have chapters. And I'd love to be able to, to lead something like this, I was talking to Cecil a little earlier about starting a, a black men's group, where we can actually sit down and actually talk to folks, and, you know, and within that, just learn as much as possible as we can, uh, that we can to understand. That's, that's how, that's, that's the group that we need to begin. If I'm gonna say that rising tide raises, you know, uh, raises our ships, that's where we really need to begin at, and really have, uh, the special hands-on touch with those people.
One more question. How will staff be trained for interaction, for the interaction with high schools and their students? So conversations and events can stay true to the goal of preserving the safe haven for the black student body, if you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned that, you know, we had that talk in class, and I say, I know you're, you're a part of it. I think that's a great way to begin to reach out to, to high school students. I think we do have a, very much of a, a, a local focus to say, hey, where, where are black students right here? And we need to begin to do better without reaching those folks. I think it's really gonna begin with that dedicated coordinator. And once we have that staff number in place, we're gonna begin to reach out to the high schools, go out to ask different folks. I work myself with a, a nonprofit here in town that does work with our, I say K two through twelve, but it's pretty much like a fifth grade through twelfth grade, that kind of, you know, is able to give scholarships and tie into those, you know, community groups to really say, hey, what is the issue? What are the concerns? What's gonna, what's taking place at that, you know, that high school level? That eighth grade through high school level to really say, what's gonna frame you, to help you become, you know, that better student? And again, I hope that emoji does, does, uh, do a better job with reaching, reaching that, I appreciate that question.
And today we saw the team, which joined Roman's house under, and it's, uh, my team.
Yes.
So I trust that you are in good hands, these folks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, um, I'm wondering about an emoji-type program in the K-12 system, Carp, Carp or Santa Barbara, uh, Santa Barbara Unified, is there an emoji program similar to what you're talking about here?
There is, well, emoji, our college program is, is slated with the charge of reaching out to our high school students. In fact, that's the, part of, part of the goal is to actually go into the high schools, say, actually, have a dedicated high school in your area, whether that's San Diego or, you know, Pasadena or whatever, and just say, hey, we are gonna focus on this high school and, and make sure these students have what they need, with the hopes that, that does reach out to other high schools. You know, we do have our main high schools right here in town, and, and I, I want to see that as a, as a, as a future goal to really, you know, do exactly what you're saying, is get into the high schools and, and tell students that there's some, some things. I want to continue with that talking in class program. I'm, I'm in communication with, uh, Just Communities, um, Simone, who's back there rocking her baby. She's, she came and presented, and she's very instrumental in the high schools. And we're just talking with those groups to continue those conversations and find out what the needs are. Because we look at all those students as being our, our future students, and we have a lot more local students coming this way, and I'd love to see our, our black students stay here in town, I don't believe, but have our black students stay here in town.
I just wanted to make one other comment about, you know, I mentioned earlier that there's, there's a lot of disparity in these emoji programs across the state in terms of the institutional commitment to the program. Some of them, uh, have part-time, uh, coordinators, some of them don't have coordinators, some of them have space, some of them don't. Um, but we have committed to the emoji program, their beautiful space next door, that we've got, we've got furniture on order. Is he right?
Thank you, Ms.
And, uh, you know, some of the things that we have in terms of a, a dedicated space for this, but also, uh, the coordinator that you're talking about, which is absolutely critical, uh, to be able to have. And, uh, in working with Dr. Ralston and others, we've, I think we've managed to, to be able to come to a point where we can commit to say that we've got, uh, a full, full-time coordinator that will be able to.
Dr. Ralston, thank you.
Yeah, she's been absolutely awesome in helping figure this out. So we're committed in a big way with this. Um, things don't happen as quickly as we want them to, but, uh, I think the commitment for the institution is that we need to move forward with this and, and jump into it with both feet. So I'm proud of the work that you're doing, proud of the comments that we've had from our, our student trustee and, and help unite, and it is unity. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, Crystal, your, your comments and help with that, as long as, as well as everyone else is here too.
Thank you, Dr. Baby. You can stay up there, Dr. Johnson, because Dr. Baby wasn't next.
Okay.
So next in line is Wendy Simpson, and she would like to speak on this thing as well.
Board president, board members. Dr. Baby, great to be here, speaking as a member. Uh, I just want to say how proud that I, this program is actually coming forward and, and looking forward to the evolution, that it continues to be something that is, that is a priority in our institutions. And as I've been following it along, I was trying to figure out, how does this process of including students who feel isolated, who feel not supported, uh, what is that about? And it felt like, in an institution, whether it's Santa Barbara City College, whether it's UCSB, but in, in an educational institution where you're going to pursue your dreams, and you're not able to do that because you don't feel accepted, you don't feel included, you feel isolated, all of those things. To me, that feels like a de- a dream deferred. You have to look at that in, in, in that pathway. It is a dream being deferred because it's not being accepted of me, uh, in, in terms of that. So that's important to think about, not only just this program, but how do we orientate people coming into our colleges, coming into our cities, coming to our UCSB, starting from our high schools? How do we do that so that the dream isn't deferred just when you get here? But understand it could be deferred from the time that you enter into the educational system, that we say education is the key to open the door of freedom. But it's not always opening that door if people are not feeling welcome, they're not feeling included. And so the one other thing that I would like to say is, the question is, so knowing that this is here, hopefully we won't have to have programs like this? Because our, our institution will be open arms, and everybody will feel like they can pursue their dreams on, as equal as anyone else coming through, through the door. So my question would be, so how are you instituting some of the lessons learned through this in your outreach to other students who may be feeling isolated or not wanting to come or not feeling a part of it?
So Wendy Simpson, obviously, big mentor of mine, like the member of Santa Barbara Unified, uh, School Board, CEO first five, I'm very, very, you know, grateful that you're here. You know, as I mentioned before, it's really about, you know, that rising tide raising, you know, all ships. That idea that if we get those students with the, the fewest resources, those students that, that are the most isolated, that those students that, that, you know, are, you know, according to what our data says and our tablo, that, you know, they, they're, they're not being served here. They're, they have that largest equity gap, that we're gonna be able to figure out what's gonna work for everyone, you know? We, we just left the Summer Learning Institute, Anna was down there, I don't know if anybody else, you know, and we basically said, man, you know, this is, this is a real big need that, that, that we need to accomplish. And again, when I, when I talk about, you know, emoji coordinators, the room is, was wonderful colors, you know, you know, I cuddled to Benetton, you know, it's like, you know, white, black, Latino, Filipino, all saying, you know, these, this is, this is a critical, critical mass that we need to attend to, with the hopes that everybody's gonna be served by, you know, that, that's, that's really it. I see this growing, and I think I've had these conversations with Dr. Baby to say, man, if we can get a great emoji program going here, we can get a great pointer program going here. We can begin that, you know, invite other groups and begin to go to have a multicultural sense here, but we gotta start somewhere. And that's, that's the, that's the core.
Uh, Simone?
Um, well, first, I just wanted to come and add my support for the emoji program. Um, a few of us, actually, Crystal was really instrumental in bringing talking class to this campus in partnership with our high schools. I know some of you all were there for the presentations, but something that happened was, as black students were sharing what was happening on their campuses and hoping to build more equitable communities, they asked a lot of the people that were administrators on their campuses, what can you do now that you have heard our truth? Now that you've heard what we're struggling with on our campuses, what can you do to make good on this, right? Now that we've trusted you with our stories? And for many of you that were there, there was not a response, uh, the room was quiet. Uh, I think this program is that response. But I also know that in that moment, it was very quiet, and the other people would have been nervous to say something. Crystal stood up and voiced concerns of so many students who were too scared to stand up for themselves. Um, so I'm grateful that this program is being talked about, that other folks are encouraging it. I also am here to really support Crystal, because in that moment, when other people were too scared, she stood up and she shared that voice. Um, I also want to mention as well that she continues to show up in our communities. And when we talk about really supporting black students, that's showing up even at times when it's not difficult. That also means showing up and saying, you're doing this, um, to support black students, even if we're not reaching out to other communities. It's okay to uplift each other. Um, and so I just want to share gratitude to Crystal for that, um, for the talking class program. And also my hope that by building trust in black communities and our high schools, more black students can come here. One of the questions one of the high school students asked after sharing with us what had happened, after feeling left out in his classes, was, does it get better? And I can't tell you how hard that is to hear a student ask you, does it get better when you know that things are continuing to happen on campuses, uh, that makes for a negative climate? Um, so I'm excited to see this both happen, I'm also excited that Crystal's a part of bringing it here. Because again, without her being in that room and talking in class, so many of those students would not have been heard.
Four more goals, I have evidence for wow, you know, sometimes you. More, we say, can you keep that going, we, you know what that means, you know? And, and for the community to come in alongside, because this has been a desire for us to want to hear from you guys. So thank you, our fellow board member colleague and members of Baby, and our students for coming, because we're gonna take time from your studies and your family and, I don't know, the drive or not, but you got here, and so, thank you. And then we have.
Crystal, also.
Uh, Chelsea?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll open up to the board as soon as we finish the public. Yeah, so.
Um, I'm just also here to show commitment to the program, commitment to Crystal, commitment to, um, I was uh, the person on campus many years ago who reconstituted the Black Student Union because black students were saying that they were feeling erasure, they were feeling, um, underrepresented is an understatement. And I think I sort of want to come into this room in support of this program and also caution our campus community that, um, I think we do a good job of building programs. We don't do a good job of creating a transformative community that is not just grounded in equity, but grounded in justice. And we put the onus of the work on certain individuals. I work with the single parents on this campus, and we just won the Rice Diversity and Equity Award, and I'm really proud of that. But I will also say, there are a lot of mixed emotions there because I don't feel like there is institutional support for single parents. Crystal's also a single mother. And I also want to say that black women historically have been the people who have been the mules for this work, who take in all the attacks, the emotional labor that needs to be done, supporting and holding up entire communities, while raising children, while doing organizing, while occupying all these spaces. She's the first black woman at that table for a raisin, right? Because these spaces have not been inclusive. So I just really want to be careful about us creating a program that's not going to create institutional change. We need to sort of ground ourselves in narratives that are talking about anti-racism, not non-racism. We need to call out things on this campus when we have policies that are grounded in white supremacy, that are not intentionally grounded for students like Crystal to receive the kind of support that they need on this campus. So I really want to say I'm glad that everybody's in this room, and we need more than a program. We need an entire campus to change, and I hope that's the start of this. That means everybody in this room doing a lot of work to really connect with what that means and to listen, um, to our students a lot more. But the equity work, it took us a year and a half to hear any black voices, any black student voices. And we spent a lot of money on research. Our students know what they need, we need to listen.
Thank you, Chelsea. Congratulations. Okay, four of them, any other public comments that I missed out there? Anybody did miss where the slips are? Oh, they're actually right over here. Yes, please stop.
I want to thank Simone, I want to thank Chelsea. I definitely want to thank Crystal, because she's definitely been the, the person that stirred the pot and, and gets some things going and be that active voice and continue to, to be, you know, a, a motivator for, for programs like this. And bang the drum, and it's not easy, because whether you have a misstep or not, you're still out there going forward and doing things that, that need to be done. And, um, yes, Chelsea has always been a, a, a great supporter, and Simone, just, just a wonderful presence that she is. Great, so just here with gratitude.
We, we, board members, students, new students. Uh, I've been here at SBCC for a little over a year, no, uh, about a year. And I was introduced to emoji through Crystal and Dr. Chris, Christopher here. And I want to say that Crystal was the first black woman on this campus to welcome me. She has always been there, and I have problems. And when I see Dr. Crystal, he's there, and I have a problem. The thing of the matter is that a lot of black students aren't standing up simply because they feel the way that I used to be, which is afraid, afraid that when they speak up, they're not gonna be heard, more than likely. If a person stands up and not be heard, they don't want to stand up anymore. I used to be that way, now I stand up. I don't care if you don't answer me, I'm gonna keep speaking. I back, I'm here to back Crystal, I'm here to just give her straight-up support, because that's my sister, I love and give. You know, and I'm here to also stand up and help Chris, Dr. Christopher, you know, to excel this. Um, there's a lot of students here that I don't know, a lot of staff here that I don't know, and I'm quite sure I might not see you again because you're busy, but I can find you, you sit and talk. Um, the thing of the matter is that there's a big problem here, not just here, but in the city and outside of the city. A lot of people don't want to come into the couch because they see what they see, they hear what they hear. And when we hear that and we see it, we don't want to have nothing to do with it. And I think it's up to everyone in this community to stop what's happening, to, to stop it, you know, to start putting it out there, politicize it, that everybody's welcome. Start putting out things that's gonna help a person see his culture. Uh, how he speaks about the black male, you know, and how she speaks about the black woman. I believe her wholeheartedly about the black woman. She has always stood behind the black woman, always. And in my opinion, she has done immaculate job. Because without the black woman, the black nun, the black man would not be standing where he's standing right now. We'd be still scraping and scrubbing, you know, hard, like we used to. We still scraping square, you know, but the thing of the matter is that, you know, standing here today, trying to put together these words at a spare moment of time. I rushed and I left work to get here. I gave up everything just to be here, just, you know, just to support and be a sister here. And I want you guys to know that I'm gonna do everything in my power to be a voice here also. Because I believe that until someone stands up, it's gonna continue to happen. I'm a voice, I'm a voice here, you can't chase me away, I'm here forever, until I graduate, graduate.
No plan, brother.
Thank you for something. Thank you, Crystal. Okay, thank you, anyone, everyone. Board members and just.
Um, I'm, I'm very emotional right now, it's 'cause, um, my feelings are hurt and I care about this work a lot, and I, I put a lot of effort into this work, so excuse me if I stumble as I talk. Um, first to address, um, Ashay and Claudia and the comments that were made about me. Um, I heard you say that, um, he's so lucky to, um, be in a department under people like that, but look, but Melissa, I would just like to let you know that, Claudia's husband actually harassed me on Facebook.
Um, Crystal, we will, um, have a.
Oh, and the point of, of being.
I know I will have a point of order because that is not on the, um, agenda, and we also have.
But thanking, make comments about me.
But we have a code of ethics, and we will not have derogatory or any claims.
Well, the processes, the processes aren't working for me. I'm.
We're going to recess, a five-minute recess for a minute, and then, um.
The processes aren't working for, for.
We have a five-minute recess, so I'm gonna, um, ask if we could, um,